Good afternoon, everybody. We're starting our chat with the candidate, candidate for Lauderdale Commission Seat 3, Nadia Assad. Thank you all for taking time out of your day. I didn't introduce myself before I introduced her because I'm so excited about talking to her. My name is Sandra Schaefer. I'm the president of the Democratic Women's Club of Greater Broward. And part of what I'm trying to do before the election cycle start is to get people to know who the candidates are that are gonna be on their ballots when they're voting. Some people are voting for the during the primaries, which is August 18th of 2020. But a lot of us are, but then everyone's gonna vote in a general election, which is November 3rd, 2020. And I believe that's the ballot that Nadia is gonna be on because there's no primary in her race, is my understanding. And she'll come correct me if I'm wrong. So her election is November 3rd, 2020. So you didn't come on this live to talk to me or listen to me. You came to find out more about Lauderdale Commission Seat 3 candidate Nadia Assad. Introduce yourself to everyone, please.
Hello, everyone. Hello, Sandra. Thank you so very much for inviting me, for giving me that opportunity to talk about our future election that's coming up on November 3rd. Actually, you're right, because we do not have a primary. And I would like also to thank everyone watching us right now, joining us. If you would like to know more about Nadia Assad, please stay with us, ask question, and please share the live while you are at it because there will be some information that will be very beneficial for the community that I would love for you guys to go ahead and share. Because afterward, Iron Chapel and Aaron, whenever we get some information, we need to share it so we can move the community forward. Once again, it's a pleasure to be here with you, Sandra. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
And I don't, I didn't want it to seem as though I was not paying attention. I'm listening to everything that you said. But before the feed, I should have set my phone for it to not auto-lock, you know, just because I wanna make sure that everything that the people need to know, that I make sure I asked you everything. And, you know, and then we have like a very good discussion. And I had a list of questions. So I wanted to look at my little cheat sheet for a minute that I wanted to, that I wanted to talk to you about. But, you know, I started off almost all the other interviews. You're, you're about the fourth interview I've had. But the very first one I had, had three ladies on the panel. So you're probably like the sixth or seventh person that I spoke to. And one of the things that I really wanna know, and I think the people wanna know, is like, what made you decide to run? Because it had to be something that made you decide to take the call, to make you decide to become a public figure. So what is it that, that you heard? Or what is it that drove you to decide that you wanted to run for this particular seat in the city of Lauderdale?
Sandra, that's a great question. Because most of the time, when you know your why, that's when you are able to achieve it, to accomplish a lot of great things. It started early with me. I remember way back from Haiti. I was probably 11, 12 years old around that area. I remember when everybody, all the kids my age, were going to school with their book bag filled with school supplies and everything else. Nadia Assad had bread, had soda, you know, juice, any little thing that she could find into the convenience store to go ahead and give to the less fortunate, which was the homeless living close by my house. So that was the routine on a daily basis. And so as I look at the things back way from my country, when I moved in here in Maya, in Florida in 1997, it was never an easy path for me. The transition was a story. And having to live the daily life where as a minority, as a single mom, where you have so many obstacles trying to survive on a daily basis with, you know, two or three jobs and, you know, not enough education. He has put me into that position to look at resources and find out what else, you know, someone can do to better their life. And I found out throughout that journey that there's a lot of things that we can do. There's a lot of things out there for us in the minority that we don't know about. The resources are there. We don't have that information to go ahead and take advantage of them. We don't have enough, you know, policy implemented into the system to help us out, especially the single parents. So a lot of things come into contest and we're looking at what I'm going through, what other people are going through. And I said, you know, I am not complaining anymore. I want to be sitting at the table where I can make changes, where I can bring positive changing, change to the community. And when we're talking about positive change, we're not talking about something for one or two, three days. We're talking about lasting changes where we can move the community forward. So I am a, how to say that, a public servant. I'm a public servant, really looking for a public office, I mean, an office, elected office. That way, I found myself, I will find myself in a position to better help, to better assist. As an artist, what I usually do, I use my skills to collect money and then help throughout, you know, and help people in the community. My family used to help. And we come to a point, we said, you know what? We have other resources. We have other ways that we can help the community without having to dig into my own pocket, without having to sleep at four, four, 3 o'clock in the morning, painting couple of pictures so I can go ahead and assist the community with a couple of needs. As I will tell you, like every year, basically, I have a charity event that I do. It's either back to school giveaway, food, or either I help somebody, you know, pay for school or school supplies, whatever it is. So having, you know, throwing my heart into the ring, it's a better opportunity for me to be able to continue on assisting my community and helping them the way that I see that they need the help.
So what I'm hearing from you is that you've always had to call to serve. And you've had that call to serve since you were like a young girl. And I just wanted to give you a shout out for you. I see you wearing red and blue, the colors of the Haitian flag. And because I was meeting with you today, I had to show you that I wore my T-shirt that says Daughter of an Immigrant. My shirt should actually say Daughter of Immigrants because both of my parents are immigrants. And I hear your, your testimony about you came to the United States in 1997 and you just found a need to serve. And I think that's a very important quality. And I just wanna, let's talk a little bit about how your experience and being, you know, an immigrant coming to the United States in 1997 will, will help you better suited to help the people in the city of Lauderdale.
Well, it has, like I was telling you before, it has not been easy. But against once you know your why and, you know, you know, your purpose, and especially when you have children, there's certain things that you learn to live with and you live, you learn to survive and to cope with it and look forward for better. My journey here, when I moved in 1997, I immediately start to go to school. Miami-Dade Community College at the time it was. Now it's Miami-Dade. And that as, as a whole, was not an easy process because, you know, at that time, when you first got here in the United States, you don't have your paperwork, right? Your status, you know, as being any, you know, a green card or anything like that. So that right there was an obstacle because it's either you go to school, right? Or you decide to pay for it because you cannot have financial aid.
Yes.
It didn't allow you to have financial aid because you consider as an immigrant. So you didn't have your green card yet.
So I don't wanna interrupt you, but I don't wanna interrupt you. But I wanna say something to that fact. So it's interesting, you came to the United, the United States in 1997 and you had that experience. I actually came to the United States in like 1976, I believe is when my parents brought us to the United States. And I never knew that I didn't have papers. You know, I knew we got on the plane and came to the United States. And I remember I'm in 10th grade, 10th or 11th grade. And, you know, and I took, they make us take this test called ASVAB or something to that effect. And it's one of the ones that, you know, you scored for like military or something. And one of the guys came and I guess I scored pretty decent on the, on the test. And he goes like, oh yeah, so where were you born? And I was like, I was born in Nassau. He said, oh, so are you a citizen? I'm like, what? I don't know. And then he asked me, well, do you have a green card? And I'm like, what's that, right? And he was like, I was like, what's a green card? And he said, well, you're gonna need that if you wanna go into the military or you go to college. And I remember going home and telling my mother like, mommy, this man asked me if I have a green card. I need, you know, we need to get that green card because if I don't get it, I'm not gonna be able to go to school or do anything with myself. So fortunately for me, I found out, you know, like while I was in high school and we, and the laws were very, very different. Because immigration is actually a very big thing right now. And it's interesting, and it's good that you brought that out. And I'm wearing my, you know, Daughter of an Immigrant shirt today. But that's a very interesting thing. But at that time, the laws were much better, much more human, is the best word for me, best way for me to explain it. The word, the law, the immigration laws at that time were just more human. And they understand that even though someone came to the United States, we came with, with the proper papers and everything. But someone was here that, you know, they're people. It's just not a number, you know what I mean? That were people, it's just a lot more humane. So yeah, sorry for that sidetrack, but I
No, 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 it's fine, it's fine, it's fine.
To talk about the different experience of immigrants, you know, in this, in this country, you know, in
Yes, it is. It has not, it has not been easy. And even until now, we're talking about school. It, it is like really a, a big issue for you to further education if you want to do that. Because you even find barriers in the institutions.
Yes.
So it's, it's crazy. So that's why I always keep telling everybody, you know, education is key. You need to educate yourself, find out the resources, how you can get in touch with certain people, where you go by to go ahead and get that process done because it's not an easy process. I'll tell you myself, before I decided to go ahead and finish, I have a degree in nursing, healthcare administration, hospitality. It was not easy, especially being a single mom. You know, you don't have the support that you really need. My mom lives with me at the time and was like, she has always been sick. You know, you name it, surgery. Because from history, she has been abused by my father where she get beating in the ears. And right now, she on her third surgery. So she couldn't go to work. So I thank God in a way that I had her to help me out when I needed to further my education. Because again, that, the system here, what I encountered, to come back to your question, it give you like, as far as us, there's two options for you in certain case, right? It's either you go to school, right? Or you work couple of jobs to pay the bills.
Yes. And you, you, you know, the little, the story, not the little, it's a big story you just told. And the story that you told just brought up so many issues and you, without you even realizing it, right? One of them is like education, right? You, but the first thing you talked about was immigration, what is extremely important. And I have to give a shout out to the city of Lauderdale because I know that they do like citizenship drives and they do a lot of activities, like on a monthly basis to help that particular community. So I have to give a shout out to that city because I
They have always been along to him with my
Right, they do a monthly citizen drive, which is very important. You brought up the issue of childcare, right? So if you're a single mother working and you have young children, childcare is so expensive. I'm the mother of twins. And I remember when they were younger and I had to put them in daycare, literally the daycare payments was probably more than the average person's mortgage payment or rent payment because it was just so expensive. So childcare is, is one of those issues. And apart with the education part of it, if you're an immigrant and you don't have the proper documentation, you, like you said, not only that you can't go to, to, you can't get financial aid, but sometimes it's hard for you to register, right? And there was a law that was in place during Obama administration that was called DACA, that the current occupant of the White House now has basically said, we're not accepting any new applications for DACA. And that was an opportunity to help young people who had no control about their manner of entry into the United States that were here undocumented. It was a way to give them an opportunity to go to school, get educated, get a social security number, get work authorization. And that particular program is, is, is at risk at this particular time because of the administration that we have. And that's why we want everyone to know that it's extremely important who you vote for and who you put in office because they make decisions that can affect your life. And sometimes people don't think it affects them directly, but it can affect you indirectly, right? So that's all, that's very important.
It does, it does. And talking about, you know, affecting directly, nobody can say that it doesn't affect you because you live in the city, you live in the country. Every decision that's being made is being made, you know, based on what's gonna happen. And one way or another, you're gonna be affected. So that's why I always encourage everybody to be engaged, participate, or participate in your city hall meetings, you know, to know what's going on, what decisions are being made for your community. Because it's very important. Sometimes I know that they do the meeting at 7 o'clock, 6 o'clock. Some of us are at work or some of them just come from work. They are tired, they cannot come. But at least in the community, you know, in your neighborhood, form a group, right? You form a group. You designate somebody that can go each time that the meeting is being held.
Great idea, great idea.
One of you guys being represented and know what's going on. And then you discuss it among you and then make a decision. At least you know what's going on in, in your community. There's another great point again, you know, about being active, being engaged in your community. In my city of Lauderdale, as you know, the 2020 census is out there. We're still waiting on people to fill out that form.
Tell them how they can do it, Nadia. Tell them how they can do it.
It is so easy. You know, for example, right now in my webpage, votenadiaassad.com. You go there, you click on it, you click on my webpage, the very first button that you're gonna see is gonna be complete the census. Easy. You just push the button and then you go directly to that site. And it takes like a couple of minutes to fill it out. We are at 52% in Lauderdale. We need 48 more percent.
So tell us why it's important for them to do that. Because some people, and I don't, and I don't know the complete breakdown of your city, but I believe that there's a significant population of people from the islands that live in the city of Lauderdale. And you, and with that being said, that might also mean that there's a significant size, there might be a number of people in the city that's undocumented. Does it matter if they're undocumented or when they fill out the census? Because that might be part of the concern. Nobody wants immigration or migrant to come to their house and haul them away.
Yes. And that's the reason why they, they make it, they make it so easy for them. You don't need them to come to your door. You can always fill it either electronically, by phone, either in the computer or either you can mail it out. And no matter what your status is, it doesn't matter because they're not going after that.
And they don't ask, they don't, they don't ask
They don't ask for that, your situation. They don't ask for your status. They don't wanna know about your status. They don't care about that. They just wanna know how much, how many people that's living in that particular household in order for them to determine how much fund is gonna be released to that city. And then from that point on, that money that's gonna be released from that city, you know how we, we need those resources. First of all, education, right? Everything that have to do with your school, that's how they determine how many lunches that's gonna be going to your school. You got free lunch. Your kids go to school free of charge. You know, you don't know what's going on with that. This is based on the census, right? You got your food stamp that you fill all the time. They determine how much money that they're gonna put on the food stamp amount that they're gonna be giving you on a monthly basis. This is there as well. You got Medicaid, Medicare, your insurance. Every aspect of your life, every resources that you can possibly think, from housing, once you, you know, for example, if you wanna buy a house, right? You're gonna go there to the city program that they have, right? And then you ask for, you know, to put you, you know, you want to go ahead and buy a house and you wanna be on the first, first time home buyer program. And then you, you look at it and then they tell you, you know what? You have to go on the wedding list because we don't have any more funding. This is the reason why. Because not many people, we don't have enough of us to fill the census for the city to have enough resources to help you out on those little things that you need on a daily basis.
And all of those are important. Yeah, all of those things that, that you mentioned, food stamps, Medicaid, free and reduced lunch, first time home buyer programs, those are things that benefits some communities that are considered underserved, right? Because there's some communities that, you know, they just have people who they don't have like the, the work experience or the income isn't very high. But that doesn't mean that they're not entitled to have food and shelter and those type of things. So that's where, you know, government comes in. And they need to have an accurate number of how many people are at community so the, so the city and the state and all can be properly funded in order for, you know, the people to get the kind of resources that they need. So that's, it's important. I mean, and I, and you can't stress it enough for the importance of the census.
Definitely, definitely. Because you got your policing services, fire rescue, you know, everything, everything that has to do with the city. You know, if you don't fill it out, has an impact on you, on your community. Because from one person, one person that doesn't fill out that form, we losing $1,600 or 1,600 or 1,000. I'm losing my head, okay? That you losing per one, for one person. You understand what I'm saying? So you imagine a whole household that doesn't fill out that form. You see how much money we're losing.
Right.
So right now, we have 50%. If anybody in Lauderdale city that's looking at me or any other city for that matter, please fill out your census because it is your future. It is the future of your kids, your grandkids. You know, you need to be living in a, that's the reason sometimes why I'm thinking, why is that neighborhood looks so different than mine? Why is that? It's because they do what they're supposed to do. They are engaged, they participate in the census, they vote. So their city is gonna look a little different than yours because they are concerned of what's going on in their community. We need to start doing that now.
And some of it is concern. So we don't, we don't, we don't wanna make it seem as though like everyone who can't am fully engaged are not concerned because people have different struggles. I grew up with a mother that worked day and night, right? She had a job during the day and she worked an overnight shift. So there were a lot of things that she couldn't do. It's not that she didn't care about her children or she didn't care about her city. It's just that, you know, the struggle is real for a lot of
It is real. And sometimes
For a lot of people.
And sometimes it's not that they don't want to. It's the, the information is not being passed on to them.
Exactly.
They don't know the importance of it. And I myself, I experienced it where I usually, what I did when I knew that the census was coming, what I did is I created charity events. Because, you know, sometimes you need to give a little incentive to attract people to come in. So once they come, before I give away what I said that I was gonna give away, I educate them about the census, about voting. Then after that, I do distribution. And you'll find out of doing that period of time, I was surprised to see how many people, Sandra, I'm not kidding you, that doesn't have any idea on what the census is.
Or the importance of it, absolutely.
Or the importance of it.
Absolutely.
Again, that's why I keep telling everybody, this is how a job, that's my duty, that's your duty, to make sure that once you get those information, to pass it on to others. Because education is, is important. Knowledge is power. If they don't know, there's nothing that they can do. Like the Bible said, my people perish for lack of knowledge. It is so true.
Yeah. And that's one of your platforms is that education is one of the big things that, that is important. And education on all level, every, people always think that when you say educate, you mean that that's you going into the school, schoolhouse and learning something? No, it's just being educated about what's the importance of it, what it is that the census does. It's the, being educated to let people know how important it is to go to a town hall, right? Because not only do you find out what it is that your city is doing, you can also voice what your concerns are or what your needs are and educate the elected officials about what it is that you think would, would better serve the citizens and the residents of that particular city. So all of that education is not, it don't, it doesn't always come from books or going to school. It comes from talking and engaging and letting people know the importance of all of these different, all of the different things that we have to do. So for those of us that don't really know what the really, what the role of a commissioner is, what is the role of a commissioner? What is it, what is that, what's the responsibilities that comes with that position?
Basically, a commissioner, it's simple. We run the city. We work together among us, the commission, the mayor, the city manager, the fire departments, the, you know, the police department. We work together to manage the city, to make sure that we look out the well-being of the citizen of the city. It includes, you know, from the park and recreation that you guys go and get some leisures. You include the fire department, the police department, your water, your sewers, you know, your, your garbage pickup, everything that has to do with the city, that's what we do. We come together and we go over, you know, different aspects of the city, different things, strength and, you know, weakness that we see that needs to be improved. And then we take care of that. But all of that is being done together. That's why one of my mantra is together we can. We always work together to find out, yes, what's going on.
And so what is it that you wanna, what is it that you wanna do to help the city of Lauderdale move forward? As you're
Well, um, as you know, every city always need improvement. I don't know any city. If you know one, let me know that doesn't need improvement. We all need improvement. Right, right now at this time, with everything else that's going on, my first plan is to sit down with the commission once I enter in the office and the mayor and the city manager and the police department, fire department, to have a SWOT analysis from that point on to find out what are the needs of the community.
Tell us what a SWOT analysis is. You just gave me a flashback to a class I had in business school. But I don't think we all, you know, all of us don't know what a SWOT analysis is. Tell us what, tell us what that means.
A SWOT analysis is basically a way of looking at either our business, like, like we're talking about the city, to looking at the city in detail. SWOT first letter is strength, S, right? W, weakness. B O for opportunity. And the T for threat.
Okay.
So you sit down within, you know, the commission, within everybody, we sit down together, we make an analysis of all those. We look at them, see what's going on. What are the strengths of the city? What's the weakness? What are the pertinent needs of that, of that city? So we can go ahead and address it. So that is what is a SWOT analysis is. So that's my plan. I can, I seen people say, okay, when I get in the office, I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna do that. Me, I'm a leader that's driven by the people's need. Once I sit down with everybody, I sit down with my constituent, I sit down with the city commission that were there before me that we, I always go to the meetings and find out what's going on. And then from that point on, we can move forward and see what are the present needs of the city for us to be addressing. But my number one choice, you know, it's education. Education at all level, all aspect. Education at all level, all aspect, cause you will find out, um, statistically, if you go make a research, you'll find out all great cities and nations, they based on education.
Yes.
They grow on education, at, at all level. You cannot move forward without education whatsoever. You have to have that. That's the base of anything that you, you know, doing, you, you know, going to open a business. You have to educate yourself about the business. What are the risks, what, you know, do you have to assess it, what are, you know, what, what's gonna happen when you open it in this area? We've come back again to the census that can give you that information. What area should I be opening my, my, my coffee shop for, you know, for, if I decide, I'm gonna go ahead and open a patisserie, a Haitian patisserie.
Yes.
The census can tell me in the blink of an eye like that, how many Haitians is in that little area right there that I'm thinking about opening the business, if it's gonna be good for me or not.
If you can sell all your pate mory in that area.
You understand what I'm saying? So this is, you know, um, my plan for the, for the community and how we plan on, you know, sitting down together, like, again, like I was telling you. It's, we cannot go anywhere by ourselves. By ourselves, we cannot do anything. Together, we can accomplish so much more. And our community, Lauter Hill, is such a beautiful city, vibrant and rich in diversity. And we, we're gonna make it work. We're gonna make it work.
Definitely, we're gonna make it work and, and making sure that all of the resources there. And you talked about fire rescue, law enforcement, that is something, that's not even about underserved community. That's what everybody needs, right? Cause you know, law enforcement, hopefully, um, keep them safe. You need fire rescue in case, you know, you have an emergency and have E M T come, so that's something that's there for everybody. So it's not.
Everybody, and they've been doing a great job.
Yes, we don't wanna give the impression that, oh, you, you're gonna fill out the census so you can help only poor people. No, you're gonna help everybody in that.
Everybody, you're gonna help the city. Yes, you're gonna help the city.
Afraid for that, like, why am I gonna do something that's just gonna give people more Medicaid? Even though if you have a heart and if that's what the person needs, that they should have, but it's for resources that helps the day-to-day operation, um, of every city and every business and all of those things. Um, are, all of those, our resources are important. Um, I know that you have, um, there are two other people that are in your race. So tell us why they should vote for you as opposed to somebody, uh, one of the other two candidates that's in your race?
Well, it is simple, um, it's all about community. It's all about community, um, like one of my friends usually said, it's, Google is your friend. You wanna vote for somebody that you know that has been there for you, that is all about the community. Do your research, you know, find out what is it that the person stand for. You have to really see, um, the, 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 the campaign that is passed, this person is, 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 is doing. What is that, the point that he wants to pass, is that something that is dear to your heart? Do you care about education? Do you care about economic growth? Do you care about the environment that you are living in? So if you do, there's no other way but to vote for Nadia Assad, because that's all I am about. About the community, making sure that we move forward and working together hand in hand with the community. Because afterward, like I was telling you, we don't, we, we, a commissioner is not, I seen that people say that, you know, when I come here, I'm gonna go ahead and do that, and do this, and do that. Uh, but at the end of the day, you have to remember, the people put you there. They put you there based on their needs, what they, what they have to do. So you have to consult them some way, somehow. You have to work with them to build that community. Cause I cannot go ahead and say, you know what, I'm gonna go ahead and place a pole light right there in the middle of street without consulting the community. Cause at the same time, he might batter them when they're gonna go to sleep at night.
Yes.
So all those things you have to take in account. So, um, one of the reasons, one of the best reason as well that, you know, people should vote for Nadia Assad, for Commissioner of Lauter Hill C three, is because Nadia is a public servant. Is a public servant looking for, um, a way, looking for the opportunity to work with you guys and, you know, further and grow the community.
And you talk about community engagement and being involved in the communities. So tell us what type of things you do, um, in the community of, of Lauter Hill?
Oh my God, that's the least.
You don't have enough time? That's how long the list is?
Let me, let me give a shout out first of all to my community leaders that are currently here. I'm telling you, they have been doing such a great job in the community, okay? Um, we're talking about everybody in the, we come from Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Burger. Um, we're talking about, um, Mayor Thurston, Commissioner De Grant, Dr. Campbell, Commissioner Campbell, um, Margaret Bates, Commissioner Margaret Bates, you know, have been there for a while now. They have been doing such a great job, and it, it has been my pleasure to work with them. Um, community service that I have been doing, and they will tell you that we always work together. The, I'm so happy, I'm so blessed and fortunate to have their support in what I've been doing in the community. Um, throughout my charity events, you know, backpack giveaway, um, turkey drive, or any educational activity that I have been doing, they have been there supporting this event, and I'm so grateful for that. Um, I mentor as well into, um, the, um, schools in Lauter Hill. Um, if, um, when we have school every morning.
Did you have a shout out to Parkway Middle?
Parkway Middle, yay, yay. They have been doing a great job. I mentor at the schools. And I also am one of the C O P for the Lauter Hill Police Department. I work with them hand in hand. I'm volunteer with them and then be a part of their youth, um, program that they have. And I also am a member of the search for the fire rescue. I work with them hand in hand as well. Whenever there's a disaster, you know, whatever it is that the committee need, um, help with, I'm always there helping around. And I am also a member of, uh, the Lauter Hill Kiwanis Club. Um, working hand in hand with them, you know, um, making sure that the community, um, get the help needed. And I'm also, um, a community outreach for, um, the Haitian American Chamber of Commerce. Um, I, it's amazing, I, I cannot really tell you anymore. That's the one that I've been, that I can, um, remember top of my head. Um, those are the community services that I have been involved throughout of the community. I was, um, um, blessed to have been nominated by the city. I, I was given the award by the city of Lauter Hill, um, for my service in the community, um, last year. And that was, um, um, done by Vice Mayor Burger at the time. So I've been in the community out there, you know, anybody that needs help, any organization, I'm always willing to work with them, um, any individual that are, you know, out there, working with them to better our community. That's, um, I've, I've been doing a lot. I've been doing, sometimes my mom like, oh my God, um, she was telling me the other day. She said, Nadia, don't tell anybody I say that, but in a way, I'm kind of happy about Corona that's here. You can sit down somewhere and get some rest. I also have an organization named, um, Paint to Impact. It's through that organization that was able, I was able to organize, um, different charity, um, activities throughout of the city to help, um, the less fortunate. Um, what we do, it's me and my family, my whole family, we paint. We are artists. We use our gifts, we, we use our talents, um, to do hard work, to do certain artworks, and then we sell them. And once we sell them, portion of that go to charity events, like sponsoring workshops, like financial, um, the, um, you know,
Literacy.
Financial literacy workshop. If I know that one of the organizations are doing something right now, I will sponsor that. So people can come in and learn something about, you know, economics, learn something about, you know, whatever it is that they are teaching for that day. So those have, you know, among others, have been, um, my involvement in the community.
Okay, so you, you saw, that, that's, that's a more than a mouthful, that's more than a mouthful. And I think with all of that experience and all that diverse experience, you'll be ready for the position day one. So, that, you did talk about, uh, you did touch on one thing that we, we need to talk about, is that we are in the middle of a pandemic. Some, the cities are slowly reopening, right? We, we basically were put, um, stuck in our houses from since March, like the middle of March until maybe a couple of weeks ago, that some of the cities are slowly reopening. So we have that issue. Uh, and then also, we, we've had some very disturbing things that happened in the news, and people are protesting in a lot of the major cities, um, throughout the United States, right? So, so safety, public safety is an issue. So we have a public safety issue in terms of the health, because we do have a, uh, we still have an issue with, um, COVID nineteen. Um, the coronavirus, COVID nineteen, that's going on. So we're trying to figure out how we can safely reopen the cities, so people don't get sick and we don't become a, a hotspot, like some of the other cities that are going on, so that's one thing. And then we also have a public safety, um, issue in terms of like, there are people who I, I know that there's several protests that are actually planned, um, over the weekend, not sure if there's one in Lauter Hill. So public safety is a big concern. How are we gonna, how, how do you think the commission, how do you think your role? Um, because we're expecting maybe another outbreak of Corona, uh, in November after you're elected. How do you, um, do you have a plan in place to deal with, uh, health outbreak with the coronavirus? Or if we find ourselves unfortunately in a situation where there's a lot of protests that, that may turn from being a peaceful protest to something else?
Well, um, I will tell you that the city manager, um, Ms. Smith Desiree has been doing a great job walking with the commission to help on we, the reopening of the city of Lauter Hill, um, where they have, um, really been emphasizing about the, the, the importance of wearing your protection gears, um, as far as masks and everything else, and to maintain the social distance, um, to protect one another. Um, as far as, um, the protest is concerned, we know that, um, there's many, um, there's little that we really can do about, um, people protesting, because it is their right. They have the right to protest, and it is frustrating what happened just now. And they have the right to express their anger and how they feel. And to be quite honest, um, I'm still trying to recover from that. But the thing, um, what we planning, myself, as, as far as I can, um, tell you, it's, um, people first. Your community first. We have to find a way to, um, make sure that everybody is, is protected. Again, they have been doing a great job providing, um, masks, um, providing food, um, doing food distribution on a, on a weekly basis, making sure that we got the necessary, um, basic things to survive this pandemic like every other city. So I am looking forward to work, um, hand in hand with them, to see in which way, um, that we can, I can assist furthermore. And my background also is nursing, um, which is, um, kind of, um, help, you know, we understand the situation that people, um, are getting in. And another aspect of the COVID nineteen that, um, it's very important, it's mental health. Um, it has to, uh, it has to go real deep on people. Um, and I will tell you myself quite frankly, me, as somebody that's always active, being out there in the community, being confined in my house, has not been easy. If that wasn't for my habit of painting, you know, no one can tell you, you know, what could have happened. I received a, a, a post no longer than yesterday, I think last night. A friend of mine that posted on Facebook, which is an artist as well, very great artist, that he wants to end his life. That is done with that. We've been trying to reach out to him and we have not been able to. So those are, um, things that I think that, um, are being in place. And I think as well, I can see that, I will tell you as well, that, um, the Broward, um, County Mayor, um, their wholeness have been doing a great job as far as putting the information out there, making sure that we have the resources necessary for those kind of things. We have the, um, hotline for mental health, we have the hotline for, um, our first responders, um, that they can call and see if, if they need help, if they need assistance. And us as community, I think, um, we have been doing a great job, and I think we have to continue on that same great job of, on checking on each other, being there for each other, cause it goes a long way. It goes a long way. So once we get together, we stick together, we help one another, there's nothing that we cannot, we cannot, um, survive. We will get through it, we will get through it, cause afterward, let me tell you something, for those who believe in God, I do believe in God, it is awesome.
Amen. Yes, and you did, you did, that is, that is a, a big thing, um, in terms of COVID, cause of mental health. And it's hard for the kids, um, you know, they were, all of a sudden, they went to school one day, and then next thing you know, they can't, they couldn't go back to school. A lot of them missed their friends, and I have a lot of special needs, who couldn't understand why it is that she couldn't go to school. And they're talking about this thing called coronavirus outside, but it's something that you can't see. But it's so, it's so dangerous, but you can't say, oh, that's what it is. You just know that it's out there. So it, it is, the mental health of everyone is definitely something that's very important. And in terms of like the other public safety issue, I believe Lauter Hill is one of the cities that, that's not part of B S O, right? Um, Lauter Hill, the police, the police.
Yes, they do, they do. And Chief Stanley have been doing an amazing job, um, throughout that, um, situation, especially what just happened. Um, they are amazing, they are amazing. I will tell you guys out there, if you are living in this, I have people that is not living in the city of Lauter Hill, that is a part of the C O P. So join us and, you know, get to know us, work with, together with us, because, um, afterward, you know, to build a community, it takes a lot of hands. So you guys are welcome to join the C O P. And we always need hands for, you know, people to volunteer to help out the community.
Right, and community policing is important, and then when the city has its own police department, they get to know the residents, they're part of the city, and it's a smaller city. So yeah, that's definitely an added.
Yeah, it feels like family. It feels like family, yeah. It feels like family.
Okay, so it was, it was definitely good talking to you. You told us why we should vote for you. All of the activities that you're doing, sounds like you're gonna be ready day one for the job. You're, um, you're, um, you're very, uh, working with the people that are already in power with the mayor, the vice mayor of city of Lauter Hill, so it'll be an easy, um, transition for you. So if someone wanted to find out more about Nadia Assad, or if they wanted to donate to your campaign, or if they wanted to volunteer to help you out with their camp, your campaign, how is it that they would do that?
Well, um, you can go to W W W dot vote Nadia Assad dot com, that's my website. And then I do have a cash app as well, as, as you know, that is a dollar sign first. Assad, the number four, one, two, three, four, the number four, Lauter Hill. So it's with Assad for Lauter Hill, for my cash app. So they can always go ahead and, and, and donate. We are looking for volunteer as well, cause you know, campaign is never easy, especially with what's going on right now. I do know that the pandemic had did take a deep, deep on our financial situation. It's not easy for certain people out there. But, you know, any amount is good, there's no small amount, there's no such thing. You know, it does add up.
Yes, it does.
Add up. So what I will tell people is like, some, sometimes you'll find out that, you know, people, um, people how we elect tend to donate to campaign. And there's several factors on, on that. There is the, the trust factors, you know? There is that, you know what, um, some of them, you know, I really don't really care about the, you know, like the voting, or whatever it is that she's doing, that's her business. I'm not gonna put my money into that. But the other aspect that you have, guys have to remember is like, you need the representation into your city. People think that, um, it donate in the presidential campaign only, or the big, um, um, position, the bigger position, or the one that matters, but no. Cause when you have some issues that's going on into your city, believe me, you're gonna come to me. You're gonna come to the commissioners. You're not gonna go to the White House. Or they're not, they're not, no, they're not, they're not. So you need to take count of that and then be able to go ahead and support your elec, your, your elected official for the cities as well, because they are a very important aspect. They are very important key people into your community. Because we take what's going on here, we take it to Tallahassee. We tell them, okay, this is what we see, this is what we need to have changed, and we take it to the Broward County Mayor. We take it anywhere that it needs to be taken care of, so it can be addressed. So you need to support that. And the other factor of, of trust that they have, um, most of the time you will hear people say, you know what? I am not voting for nobody because they have not done anything. No. You are the taxpayer. You're gonna pay me to come and help run the city. It's like any other job. You pay me to run the city with your tax dollar, that's, that's what, that's how I'm getting paid. So it is absolutely normal for you, when you put me in the office, to do certain job, to take care of that particular task. When I don't deliver what I'm supposed to be delivering, I'm expecting you to hold me accountable.
Absolutely.
And that's the only way we're gonna move forward. Don't sit down and stay complacent, complaining, 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 and don't take it what it needs to be taking.
Absolutely, and people need to understand, and that's how, that's what we refer to as the down ballot candidates. People go in on November third, twenty twenty, say, I'm only voting for the president, that's the only position that matters. And that's not accurate, because county commissioners, um, the sheriff, um, the.
The judges.
Election, the school board members, all of those people are the ones that are making decisions about your day-to-day living. The things that happen to you every day are made by your local, um, uh, elected officials. And it's very important who you choose to represent you in your county, and who you choose to represent you in your state. Of course, because they make the day-to-day decisions. The ones that you send to Tallahassee, they're the ones that's getting money to bring back to your city. So all of those, those positions absolutely matter, and we do need to take account of that. So we don't, and again, one of the reasons why I wanted to do something like this is because I didn't want people to go in on election day and only vote for the president, thinking that the other candidates don't, doesn't, don't matter. And then I also didn't want them to go in there, in a room, and look at a name, and they don't know any of the people that are running. There's like, I don't know who that is. And they're basically guessing on who it is that they're gonna vote for. And it, and the decision on who represents you is too important for it to be relied on, on a guess, and, and for you to vote for somebody you've never heard of. You don't know what their platform is. You don't know what it is that they wanna do for you, you know? That person might have some interests that are contrary to yours, but you don't, but you don't know that. So I thank you so much for taking time out of your busy day to come and talk to us and talk to the people that are listening, um, on the Democratic Women's Club website, and I know you streamed it on your platform also, so that's, um, that's very important. And like you said, down, down ballot candidates are extremely important.
Yes, they are, they are.
Day-to-day decisions about your life, so.
Yes, yes, I will tell you, cause I work for S O E as well. Um, and I work for them, and I will tell you that, that has been my experience, where, when they come and then they're telling me, okay, um, I'm, I'm getting, I'm getting Andrew Gillum on me. I'm like, okay, you have to vote for the other one as well. So again, education.
Yes.
Education. They need to know that, they need to understand that somebody, me and you, the other elected official, the other candidate, that's our job to educate them, to go out there, make them understand the importance of voting for the others as well.
Yes.
Again, education.
Yes, we need to educate the community on who it is that wants to represent them in these positions of power. Uh, and it, it, it is power, because you're making a decision about the resources, how things are gonna be distributed, what it is that's gonna be happening in the city. Um, and you also wanna make sure you, you, uh, vote for someone who's gonna listen and do what the community needs, as opposed to, they have their own agenda, and they wanna go, they wanna take this position to just promote their own agenda, as opposed to the agenda of the people, right?
Of the people.
It might be a bucket list idea for them. They're like, you know, before I die, I wanna make sure I hold an office, you know? You know, I'm not saying that person may not do a good job, but that's not, you don't want that to be the primary reason.
Primary reason, exactly.
Such an important role, because you, you decided to become a public servant, and so the people, the person that has that position, their number one good goal should be to serve the public.
To serve, to serve.
Okay, so tell us about your social media platforms, how they can check you out, um, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram?
Yes, I am on Facebook, I'm on Twitter.
Handle so people can follow you.
Instagram. Um, I am everywhere, like my, my mom usually said. I am on Instagram, Facebook, and my website is W W W dot vote Nadia Assad dot com. And in there, you're gonna find ways to contribute to my campaign, and you're gonna find a button as well to fill out your census. Please, 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 please. And then, um, you have also my cash app, um, for those, cause sometimes I found that it's a little bit easier for people to go ahead and send a cash app. So my cash app is.
Vote for Assad, what is it again?
The cash app is Assad for Lauter Hill.
Okay, dollar sign.
Assad, dollar sign.
Cash app. And what's your name on Instagram?
My name is Nadia Assad on Instagram. Or it, I think it's Assad five fifty-six, um, thirty-six. Once you put Nadia Assad, I am the only one there, just like I am gonna be the only one in the ballot.
Okay.
The only Nadia Assad in the ballot.
Yes, okay, okay, so we can find you on Facebook, Instagram, you have your website, votefor, um, Nadia dot com. You can donate, uh, you can send her money via cash app, you can volunteer.
Volunteer, yes.
No, we, 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 she appreciates all of the support, and I appreciate you for taking the time out to, um, talk to us. And the last thing I wanna say is that we wanna encourage everybody to request their vote by mail ballots, their, um, vote by mail, because we are in the middle of a pandemic, we have a lot of things going on. We're not sure what election day is gonna look like. We don't know what it's gonna look like, and we don't want people to not vote, because it turns out that it's. We don't know what it's gonna look like, and we don't want people to not vote, because it turns out that it's gonna be extremely dangerous to go on the streets.
Out there, yes.
Election day, so I think when you go to browardsoe.org, it's a thing and it just shows up for you to, um, to, um, request your vote.
Request, yes.
It shows up, so it's very simple, you put in your information and you do the request.
Take a minute.
You email confirmation that they received it, and then you'll get your, um, your ballot in the mail. And the other thing we want people to understand that even though you request a vote by mail, if on election day, you decide that you don't, um, you wanna go in, or, or like, well, we wouldn't want you to wait until election day, cause if you wait till election day, you can't even vote, you can't mail it in that day for them to receive.
Exactly.
I think you can drop it off at the SOE's office.
Yes, you can.
But you couldn't mail it in.
Yeah.
So, uh, or during only verdict, you still have the option of going in to vote, if it turns out. Um, if you haven't voted with the mail-in ballot, you have the option of going in to vote. Uh, but we want you to request it just in case.
Yes.
Find ourselves in a very difficult situation.
Situation, yeah, with the pandemic.
So your date is November third, twenty twenty?
Twenty twenty, yes.
Lauterhill Commission, seat number three.
Seat number three, yes.
Right, right, okay, any last words before we sign off?
Well, I want to thank you again for this wonderful opportunity. It was certainly a pleasure discussing Nadia Assad campaign with you and the other, um, aspect of the committee was going on and looking forward to more discussion with you, I know we have worked together, um, so many times. And for those who doesn't know, um, that, I would tell them right now, um, if you guys need a great lawyer, a great lawyer in immigration, this is your girl Sandra. She speak, she speak Creole as well, or I should say English. So you can go to, um, Sandra, she is awesome, she have worked with me with, um, several clients and then have helped them. Um, e- even if she cannot help you, she'll tell you, she'll guide you, what is the, the next step that you need to do in order for you to get yourself situated, um, situated in immigration's, um, issues. And, uh, again, thank you so very much, I thank everybody that's watching us, if you guys have any questions, if you have suggestions, if you have any ideas, anything that's going on in the committee that you want me to be aware of, that we can discuss, how we can move forward, I am open to discussion. Um, if you want to volunteer as well, I can give you guys my phone number, it's nine five four, three zero five, seven two six two. I'm gonna be the one answering, we can discuss whatever it is. And don't forget, please, get registered to vote, don't forget your census, and don't forget, no matter what happen in the next couple of months that's gonna come, we all in this together.
We're all in this together, right, right, yes, and you said something about registering to vote. Um, I, I, I spoke with, um, one of the candidates for the supervisor of election yesterday, Carter Lynch. And she, and one of the problems that people were having was that their signature matching, right? So you need to make sure that your signature, um, that you use now is the same signature you had when you registered to vote, whenever that was, right? But if you update all of your information, if you update your address or anything like that, you can update your signature now to make sure, so you don't run into any problems that on election.
Yes.
When you go in, if your signature have changed for one reason or another, you're not allowed to vote a regular ballot, right?
Yes.
Register to vote, first of all, fill out your census form, because we need all of those forms completed, we need those numbers um, in order for the cities to all get fully funded. Um, Nadia Assad, candidate for Lauterhill, seat three, commission seat.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for.
Thank you, guys, it was a pleasure, bye.
Have a good one.
You too, thank you, thank you, Sandra, bye.